to order. There is only one agenda, which is the budget. So unless someone has anything else to add, we will approve the agenda as circulated and move right into our presentation from our CIO and our senior management team that is here because there's a lot to unpack in there. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So just to start, everyone has a copy of the Budget Binder, and the Budget Binder is divided into sections by services, and then the capital budget's at the end. We have the 10-year capital budget as well as the current year as well. Here's strategic priority chart and some information on facilities. Each service area has the priorities councils established for the year, as well as any service level enhancements or reductions are noted within that as well. So tonight we'll go through the budget, and we will do that after a little bit of high-level information. We'll go into each service area and look at what's new within those budgets as well. So the 21-22 budget, operating budget is $22,506,394. That's a 5.6% increase from last year. And it's important to note that last year we had reductions in our budget to, in anticipation of the impacts of COVID-19. So it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples. And there's some examples that we'll show you of that where we had very low budget numbers last year, and this year we have higher numbers like the pool and things like that. The capital budget is $14,252,462, and I would say that that's a fairly aggressive number with some important capital projects that are proposed within the capital budget. Council reviewed the capital budget in, I believe it was late January, early February, and there have been a few changes since then, and we'll highlight those for you tonight as well. This budget proposes a tax rate of $1.75 per $100 of residential assessment, so that's a 10-cent increase, and we'll go over why that's required to support the budget. The commercial tax rate is proposed to remain the same as last year at $3.97 per $100 of assessment, and the LCLC special purpose tax is $0.6 per $100. The wastewater rate, council's been transitioning to a rate that will sustain wastewater, both operating and our debt servicing costs for wastewater and reserve planning. And this year we'll see a 15% increase as we transition over to that rate. So the annual residential rate is $464.66, and the commercial is $986.93. And council has directed that staff prepare the full transition plan that would see us go to a consumption-based rate in 2022, '23. So this is just another move as we transition to that. And through this budget, the strategic priorities that council developed in January are implemented. In terms of what we achieve within the budget, community prosperity, under this category you see there's a number of infrastructure projects. So Exit 12A, the interchange project, big with the business park expansion opportunities. So there's $3.2 million in our capital budget this year. That's proposed as our portion of an $8.4 million commitment the town's made to a project that's over $50 million. The economic development strategy is proposed to be developed this year, and there's $30,000 in the budget for that. Marketing and promotion, $13,000. That's a normal amount, but it's dedicated to developing the marketing plan and promoting the town. You'll see in the baseline, economic development, and this is a new service for the town. So this will be the first full year with this service in place. Mark Powell, our economic development officer, started, I believe it was the end of February, and he's only a member with the town. So this will be a new service for this fiscal year. Energize Bridgewater continues, and there's $1.2 million in our capital, but it's totally funded by grants. And we have some significant investments in infrastructure that's required to support growth. So wastewater, there's approximately $5.6 million in our capital with some grants allocated towards that. Road upgrades in our operating budget, we have, in capital combined, we have $600,000 for pavement renewal, or pavement management. Pearl Street, council's directed that we look at providing funds within that for paving, so there's $25,000. And then other at $4.7. So there's various infrastructure projects that we're doing that's going to involve touching the road in some ways, so we did some improvements with that. And then sidewalks, there's $100,000 within our capital to look at sidewalk improvements. So those are all to support growth and development in town. In terms of place-making and quality-of-life initiatives, this year we will see the development of an accessibility action plan. So we had originally proposed $40,000, and we're looking at, we looked at reducing that to 20 to make the budget work. And we will enter into a regional partnership with our neighboring municipalities to see that developed, sharing an accessibility coordinator. Recreation 2.0 continues this year with implementation, so there's some funds in there. There's $10,000, so we'll be looking at some regional program, online registration software and some programming initiatives. We continue to have trail improvements and maintenance on our trails. Bridgewater Memorial Arena, there is a redevelopment plan proposed for that. Council's been presented with that concept already, so there's $115,000 in total for that. Park improvements, so there'll be some signage and trail improvements within our parks. Affordable housing needs assessment, council's asked that we incorporate funds within our budget to undertake that this year. And there's streetscape initiatives that we have, some funds that the downtown planning advisory committee has asked that we look at incorporating into our budget. The museum, there's some proposals within the budget to see us increase our services there and continue with our community outreach through programming. The Lunaber County Lifestyle Center continues to be funded and operating in capital, so we provide that facility to our residents. Transit continues again this year, and that has a $238,000 operating cost for the town, and we've done some renovations, and we'll continue to, to the arena to enable that to be the facility for transit. Community events, there's funding in the budget for community events this year, and we'll probably see a hybrid, a lot of it depending on COVID-19. So a candidate game might look a little different, but we're planning some funds for, for events. Council would continue to support nonprofit organizations through this budget, so grants to nonprofit organizations are $29,000 for that. In addition to that, you just, you just approved $15,000 to be carried over to be used this year as well for COVID emergency response. And tax exemptions to nonprofits, that totals $10830. So that's the same as a grant to nonprofits. And we continue to invest in emergency response, so you have your fire protection at $1.4 million, your police protection at $3.9 million, and emergency response, which is re-mo at $26,000. In terms of ensuring fiscal responsibility, this year we'll see the development of a debt management strategy, reserve policies, and how we establish reserves and what for. We are contributing to reserves, so there's $729,000 going into capital, and there's $570,000 going into our wastewater reserve, which you'll see under the operating reserve tab. The Betterment charges bylaw will be implemented this year, developed and implemented. User rate transition strategy will be developed, so we moved to a user-pay model. And we are aggressively sourcing grants with our grant coordinator to help offset our capital and operating initiatives that are within this budget as well. And under the category of organizational excellence, this year is the second and hopefully last year of our records management implementation. So this year we'll buy the remaining licenses so that all of our employees have laser piece licenses who would need to have access for filing. In terms of internal control measures, we had an internal control audit done two years ago, and there were some recommendations within that. So we'll continue to implement that. And this year we're looking at time and attendance, and we're also looking at the procurement module, which we are in the midst of implementing now. And there's funds of $10,000 for, I have fraud audit down, but there's some decisions for council to make with respects to that, but that was a recommendation of our auditors as well. And then we have changes to programs in our facilities and our infrastructure related to COVID-19. And we had $334,000 identified for council that was fully funded through grants, through the COVID-19 restart grant, that we're carrying over into this year's budget to complete. So it's fully funded. And that will ensure that we have a safe workplace and provide services safely to our residents in response to COVID-19. So this shows your operating budget at a high level. You can also see that in your tab as well under operating. And here you can see that your budget, as mentioned, is $22,556,394, and that's a 5.6% increase. And we are budgeting for zero to balance the budget essentially, so there's no surplus, no deficit. We are not allowed to budget for a deficit, so we have to balance or be a little bit over. And as I mentioned, in 2021, we are, when you look at the budget numbers, you'll see that some of the categories were low, and that's because we did cuts last April, May, May I believe it was, to respond to COVID-19. So when we're looking at our baseline, it's not an easy comparison for some things. So where does your tax dollars go? How does all get split up? If we were to kind of show it in the pie chart, this gives you an idea of where some of the bigger consumers are in terms of tax dollars and the provision of services. So police is the largest item within our budget, and that's 21.85% of our operating. Engineering, which is our infrastructure, our roads, our facilities, public works would fall under there, snow removal, all those, is 11.48%. Mandatory contributions, so those are things that we don't get to really, we don't get to say what the bill is. We just get the bill and we have to pay that. So that'd be school, assessment, library services, housing corrections, that would fall in under that. And that is 11.24%. And then we go down to parks, recreation culture is next at 10.41%, wastewater at 8.7%, and then you can see it goes down from there in terms of how much each, each service consumes of the tax dollar. This is just showing you in terms of mandatory contributions, which is the piece that we collect the money, but we send it to other provincial departments essentially. You can see that this is $2.5 million, or 11.24% of our gross expenditures, and education is the biggest piece of the pie there. So that's for schools within, within our region. And that's $2.1 million. So $2.1 million of our budget goes to school. This is how our budget is funded. So you can see that 82% comes from the tax rate. And then we have special purpose tax for LCLC, grants, reserves that we pull from to fund. We have unconditional transfers, we sell the services. So you'll see in the police budget that we have criminal records checks that we do for other, for other areas, and we generate revenue doing that. Grants in lieu of taxes for provincial and federal buildings and the land that they do there. So, but the, I guess the take-home is that 82% is tax revenue. That's, that's how we, we fund, primarily fund our budget. And we are, we are attempting to secure more grants so that the blue area gets a little smaller. Council's asked us to look at alternate revenue sources as well, which will have a positive impact on that too, so that we lessen the dependence on that and diversify that. In terms of mandatory contributions, this year we see a $71,394 increase, and that is a 2.9%. So library is the biggest one there, and you remember the smaller the number, the bigger the percentage increase. But our library's gone from 52 to 66, so that's a $14,000 increase. So it's $129,000 more this year. The wastewater reserve, you'll see more money going into that this year than previous. So we are proposing 570,816 into that reserve with the rate increase. So that's an increase of 209,000 as an expenditure within your budget. Recreation programming, this is an example of something that we reduced because of COVID-19 last year. And it's increased by 60,000 and that's the result of going back to pre-COVID in terms of programming costs. And the same with the swimming pool, we didn't open it last year, so we only had 2,000. And we're planning to open it and continue with programming, so it's up to 65,000. So those alone account for 719,000 in terms of some of the larger increases within our budget this year. So the way that we look at our budget is we have what we call, you'll see, you'll have the annual budget, the projected, and then a column that says adjusted baseline, additions, deletions, and then the proposed budget. So your adjusted baseline is your core. So if we did nothing new, just continue with our existing services, this is your baseline. So you're going to see increases in there like CPI, insurance might go up, power, those types of things, and salaries as they move through their scales. But nothing new, this is your core, this is your service that the town has been providing. We look at last year's budget and as I say, we do those random increases, but we also pull out things that we did last year that we're not doing this year because they were one-offs. The additions are what's new. So these would be either service level increases, projects that we want to work on, such as the affordable housing needs assessment, that would show up in the additions column. And deletions are those things that we're taking away. So we're cutting a service, we're no longer doing something, we no longer need something, so we're taking it out. And then your proposed budget, I think everyone understands what that is, but that's when you basically go across the columns, add your additions, take away your deletions, you get your proposed budget. And to kind of help me understand, how did things change a bit from last year if we just wanted to look at our baseline? So I took the 2021 budget, which was $21.3 million. When we adjusted the baseline, we came to 22.3. And then I take out the deletion, so the things that we're not doing anymore, and that brings us down to the revised, which is 21.6. So it narrows down that gap a bit. And we just went over some of those increases to our budget that kind of helped explain the difference in your baseline. So there's not a lot of, there's less than 300,000 there in terms of increases. So you can see that when we did our adjusted baseline, we had a deficit, sorry. And then we added in our additions, and there's 904,000 of additions. And some of those are revenue, so there was the tax rate increase, non-tax revenue, transfers from reserves, and then our expenditures. And that brought us to 177,000. And then we take out our deletions. So we end up with a budget that is balanced with all of the additions and deletions within Any questions so far on that process?
Stacy. Excuse me, would we normally plan for a surplus or do we just plan to balance the budget?
That's up to council, but we get penalized for, in our FCI, it's our financial condition indicators with the province, whether we're over or under, if we're not within a certain range of what you budgeted. So I've seen some where they're like 20,000 over or whatever, but normally we would try to balance at the zero. And try to stay as close to that zero as you can throughout the year. Because it's budget accuracy that they're looking at.
Okay. Other questions so far?
Okay. So what we're going to do now is go through the tabs on each service that we provide or each department. And so if you go to administration, and this is kind of where the management team's going to jump in too, we're going to just kind of highlight for you what it is that our priorities are, any service improvements that we have proposed in the budget, and then focus on what's new. So each slide that you see on the screen is going to be the additions and deletions column. And we'll give you a little bit of comment about the baseline, like if there's been any changes in the baseline.
I do want to say, I really appreciate the additions and deletions column in the binder. Just makes it, I mean, we go over every line when we're at home, but the additions and deletion line kind of makes it pop a little bit easier and see what's going on. So thank you whoever came up with that one.
Okay. So with the administration department, you can see that our key priorities this year is the BMA redevelopment plan and the council's consideration in approving this budget is part of that. The accessibility action plan, asset management, records management, business park communications, wastewater consultation plan, economic development strategy, business improvement district, and the exit 12A market analysis strategy as well. In terms of service level improvements within the administration budget, records management, implementation, asset management, economic development resource focused on business growth, and the bid for business area improvements and solutions, assuming that there's an appetite to proceed with that. And there are no service reductions proposed in this budget. So in the baseline, there have been no significant increases or changes, recognizing that there were a few changes in the admin area that we made to accommodate COVID. A lot of that had to do with professional development, like back, you know, conventions and PD costs because nobody was moving anywhere. Everything was online and free at the time. The baseline does include the new service of economic development, so when you look at the baseline, you'll see a big number there and that's what that is. And then we have the full year for remuneration for councilors and that was approved by council to start in November. So last year that was just a few months, this year it's the full 12 months of that. So in terms of what's new, what's changed from the baseline? In terms of, as you can just see, we took out 5,000 because MIT REAP was removed as a cost for the tuition part of it. Strategic planning session, we added 2,000 in there to enable council to undertake that. Administration salary, there's $13,645 proposed for a student. And you'll see up in revenue that we have $7,915 proposed as a grant to offset some of that. And that's for records management. So what that is, is scanning our permanent records that we have filed away in a vault so that we can have them electronically filed. Legal services is QP negotiations and a budget for that. Accessibility is our share of the regional coordinator to develop the accessibility action plan. And as I mentioned, when we first talked about this, we had proposed 40,000. One would be for the coordinator that helps the committee and provide some guidance, and then one for consulting services to really drill down into our facilities. We backed out the 20,000 and left it at 20,000 just to make the budget work. Office furniture reconfiguration, as we do some changes upstairs to make space and some of that's being done under COVID-19. The HR advisory services, we pulled out, there was 5,000 as an allowance, we pulled that out because we really use legal. Professional development, 7,000 was taken out of the admin staff piece because the tuition for MIT REAP has been paid. Computer hardware, we filled our two positions, so we're removing 3,500, we don't need that this year. Consulting is down 2,447. So all that's left in that budget is money that's offset with deferred revenue, a grant for looking at appraisal work to do with the interchange. Elections, we had 32,000 in the budget last year, we're pulling that out because there is no election this year. Conventions, we reduced the budget by 5,000, figuring that FCM and NSFM would be partially virtual this year, so there'd be no travel for those. Emergency measures, there's 1,250 and that is the stipend that's provided to the assistant emergency management coordinator for being on call. On, I think they do it every sixth weekend, they're on call. And then when Angela is on vacation, they're on call. We have economic development, 30,000 for an economic development strategy. We're proposing that we reduce the facade grant program from 35 to 25. And that's based on applications and also looking for areas that we could reduce to make the budget work. 1,500 is being reduced for land sale prep and that's just based on actuals. And contingencies, we have $65,000 as an addition to contingency. And what this would be is for implementation of a salary review for non-unionized staff. So council had a salary review and job evaluation review done so that we could ensure that we were comparable to market for salaries for employees. So that's been done, the job evaluation instrument and the results of the review need to be brought back to council to show you what it's going to look like. But the calculations indicate that it would be 65,000 to implement throughout the year. And it would be implemented once council approved the changes to the ranges. And then contingency, you'll see that there's $75,000 coming out and I just left contingency at 25. So normally it was 100, I believe, is what we had in there and I pulled 75 out just because we haven't been using it and left 25 in. So you have 161,000 in additions and 146,000 coming out as deletions.
Questions on administration? Council call?
I think the facade improvement is a valuable program. You mentioned part of the rationale for the decrease in funding was applications, so are we not normally using the full amount that we budget?
I think right now we're at what, we're not at the 35,000 this year?
We are at the 35,000, but there are a couple of facade applications that may not be completed this year in time. So it runs the fiscal year. And so those applications, they have till, I guess, Wednesday to have that work completed.
So it'll be punted into the new year, so we won't be spending 35,000 this year?
So I had a question that was similar. So there are opportunities, if council decided to move ahead with it reduced to 25, like this year we had unspent grants, we could reallocate. So let's say next February someone makes an application, facade money's run out, but we have $5,000 left in grants, we could use that money.
You can make an adjustment and budget, yeah?
Other questions on administration?
Okay, so around to finance, so that's Kim.
Good evening. So I'm just going to go through the same structure as Tammy did with a brief description of our priorities in finance, and then we'll get into the details of our budget. So we have some key priorities for this department, a lot of which were already mentioned through the beginning part of the presentation, which are the wastewater strategy, tax rate strategy, alternative revenue sources. We are in the process of implementing the town suite procurement module, so it's been rolled out to the majority of the heavy users, but it's still in process. We are looking to implement a time and attendance module as a result of the previous internal controls review. And we're looking to still continue on with making some of those changes based on that internal controls process review, as well as lead pipe financing program. Some of our service increases that you'll see in this budget would be based on the procurement module. And the impact on that is efficient, or the impact of that is efficiencies, not necessarily cost. The time and attendance was earmarked to be funded with COVID restart funds, so even though that's a priority, it's actually not reflected as an addition in this part of the budget. You saw it during the COVID restart budget. As well as internal control processes, and so, and we'll talk about that in respect to the fraud risk assessment Tammy mentioned earlier. And the addition of a financial analyst, which would just be repurposing a previous position in finance. Looking at the specific budget in the finance tab, you'll see under the revenue, a few significant increases. The first being taxable property, which would be as a result of the 10 cent increase in the residential tax rate that's being proposed. So that will increase revenue by 535,595. Tammy had previously mentioned the addition of a summer student for records management as well as the funding for that. So the 7,915 of funding is finance and admin are splitting that position, so you'll see the revenue and the offsetting expense in finance as well. And under transfers from reserves and surpluses, 394,805. That is the COVID restart monies coming in of 334,805. So that's our estimate of what won't be spent at the end of Wednesday. And will be transferred to reserve and then it's going to come back in to finish funding the rest of the COVID restart projects. In addition to that, 334,000, we are recommending that two operating expenses be funded by reserve transfers. And that was the parking study that was in the 2021 budget for $40,000 that wasn't completed and carried forward into the 2122 fiscal year. So we're recommending, because we're anticipating a pretty significant surplus in the 2021 year and that project was earmarked and not completed, we're recommending that we use some of that surplus to fund that. As well, there's another $20,000 for park aid repairs that we're also recommending come in from reserve as a result of the reserve transfer that's going to go in from the surplus. And just to kind of circle that, if we have a surplus at the end of the year, we are required to put it in reserve at the end of the year. So even if we have technically a surplus of a million dollars, we are required to transfer it to operating reserve. So when you see the financial statements at the end of the year, it's going to say zero. But we do separately show that reserve, but it's required to go there. And then council can choose through the budget and approvals how we spend that in the future. And that's why they force you to put it there, not just eat away at it over time, sitting in accumulated surplus. And so that's the total increases to revenue of 938,000. Under finance compensation, again, the summer student is noted in that line, so the 46,945 includes summer student. Repurposing a role in finance, the budget is $10,800 for that. And that's just the difference between salaries levels for that position. And then 70% of that is recognized by the town and the other 30% is covered by the Also, under finance compensation, there's also other kind of lumped in there. And that includes the additional $10,000 for the broad risk assessment. So the baseline includes the internal controls review, which we started two years ago when we were, ended up cutting $10,000 out due to COVID-19. So putting that back in plus another $10,000 for the fraud risk assessment, that is a more expensive process than the internal controls work. But the fraud risk assessment results in some fraud training and a number of different activities so that we have a good response. I was actually attended a session today on fraud and cyber risk and in the payment card industry, so mastercard payments and things like that. So it really helps us establish where our risks are and if we need additional safeguards. So that's why that's been added in. In addition, also in there are office supplies, 12,500 in addition. Most of that pertaining to a postage machine that was in last year's budget that also was cut due to cuts. that also was cut due to cuts for COVID. So we still need that machine, however, that's in our additions this year. There's one reduction, which was recruitment costs that was budgeted in last year, $15,000. So that's a reduction. Under information management, Tammy talked a little bit about this already. The addition is for a wireless access points upgrade at the town of $8,000. But in addition to that, if you're kind of looking at last year's budget to this year's budget, there's an increase, and that's a result of Municipal Joint Services Board budget impacting ours. So we've got an increase there in the baseline. Under Bridgewater Museum Commission, the reason the addition is shown in the finance budget of 47,581 is because the commission has its own budget. This is where the funding that goes from the town tax rate to the museum shows up. So I think it's addressed a little bit later, that addition. There is one deletion from the general capital fund line. So the $1.2 million that was there as a baseline, what happens is every year we try to fund capital projects partly out of the tax rate. And we take the prior year number and try to add 5% to that every year so that we're, you know, we're increasing the amount that we're funding out of operating. When we were trying to balance the budget, we had some difficulties in that because we have a really significant capital budget, but also some, as you can see, an increase to our baseline and services. So we proposed that we reduce the amount of capital from operating by 349,500. And the last item, extraordinary and special items, again, that's the COVID restart expenditures that we have to spend by the end of March of 2022 for the safe restart funding.
Any questions of the Director of Finance?
Can I ask a question in general?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
In all budgets, we have a proposed budget last year for 2021, which our numbers are listed at the end of that column. Then you have projected, which is what we expect our actual numbers for the year to be. But our proposed budget is not based on our actual numbers, they're based on the proposed budget from the year before. So, and I would think these should be numbers should reflect what the actual budget was this year at year end, additions or deletions adjusted to that. You come up the same way in the long run, but I just don't follow why you wouldn't use your most recent, your most accurate numbers to do your next budget.
Because there's, sometimes there's circumstances that come up throughout a year that don't enable you to carry out the work program as you planned. So your projected might be lower. It could be work.
Vacant positions.
A lot of it, yeah, exactly. We had some unpaid positions, the positions were vacant for some time and not by choice. So you'd see salary not spent when normally it would be. So there's a lot of variables that come up throughout a year that could impact.
And I clicked, like, don't assume that that adjusted baseline is last year's budget because it's not necessarily. So we, like, it's not last year's and then moved over there. We do look at that. Some of the adjusted baseline are actually based on like a five-year trend on some of the revenue and expense accounts. So it's, we do take into account that projected. Remembering the projected is also just an estimate of where staff feel we're going to be at the end of the year. And so our actual could be somewhat different than that because we're still trying to get projects carried out by year end. So the projected is not a perfect number either, I guess, from, you know, to base the next budget on. It's not our actuals. If it was our actual March 31st, it might be more reliable.
You still have to look behind the number, though, to really understand.
Yeah, we budget every account number.
Yeah.
I'm not happy because I don't agree, but I'll have to accept.
Other questions? Counsel Kova?
On page, this is on, I'm looking at the digital copy of our budget, it's on page 10. Anyway, I'm just wondering about, so commercial assessments are expected to be down 2.5%. So is that as simple as we have fewer businesses paying taxes, or is there something more involved?
That number, so it's our actual number because we've been provided our assessed values already. So, and it, commercial's not based on the value of the building that it's in. So it's not necessarily that a building closed, or it could be revenue is down for that business, whatever evidence they have, that their assessed value should be lower. So it's not as simple as residential are, where, you know, we've got, generally see a trend upward, you know, and we adjust for the cap. The commercial's a bit different.
So we were on an NSFM call where they explained for hotels, for example, their assessment is based on their revenue two months of the year. So if you, I think it was like March and November. So in November, with restrictions, and last March, with the fall of, you know, COVID, just everything shutting down, a hotel that remains open, its assessed value might be a tenth of what it was last year's. So when they start up again, they show their financials, it will lift, but the hotel is still open and operating. So it's, that was new to me. I didn't know that's how they calculate it. Some businesses are different. So hotels was, and Deputy Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but hotels were the only one that was calculated two specific months, I think. But a hotel could be full today, but because it was based on how it was assessed in November, when it was empty, their value, their assessment is lower.
I think an important thing there to note, too, is that, as Kim explained to me, if our commercial assessment goes down by, say, one, our residential has to go up by two. So it's not as simple as saying, well, our residential assessment increased by 2.2. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to see that reflected in the overall tax, tax revenue growth, because the commercial has more power, obviously.
Yeah, with that, with that much higher tax rate, you know, that loss in every dollar commercial takes $2 increase in residential, get to the same revenue number. It's pretty impactful when you think about it.
But it's certainly an interesting question. When you look around and you think, oh, we did quite well in terms of our local economy, you know, doing as best as it could during COVID, when you look at other provinces where, you know, a whole street is gone because, you know, I look at communities in Ontario where I have family, and their main street, they're all closed because they had a full lockdown where no business could operate. So you look at the commercial assessment, you think, most of these businesses are still operating, why is it lower? But it's the way it's calculated.
Counsel Frasier?
Yeah, I just have a question as to, and I may have asked this prior to, but I can't recall. On page 22, under expenditures, what would an example be of the extraordinary and special items that would fall into?
Can you tell me what the total is?
Yeah, it's 330.
That's the COVID restart funding that's coming back in. Like, it really doesn't belong anywhere.
Okay, so it's just one item.
For lack of a good place to put it, it's falling under finance. I mean, it could have went under finance admin. We could have spread it out to each department who owned each little piece of the budget, but we kept it all together because it's easier for you to see.
So there's only one item in there?
So I only have to explain extraordinary once.
Excellent, thank you.
It's a whole bunch of little items that make up that number.
Yeah, I think in the past, we had, that happened for Hurricane Dorian. It was just like, but it was a much smaller figure. But we did have some impact in costs that was tracked separately for that. That was just a, doesn't belong anywhere, but it costs the town money. So in this case, I can at least tell you there's offsetting revenue, you know, that's matching that. We just didn't want to have it mixed in with other things. It's right there for you to see.
Yeah, thanks.
Other questions on finance? Counsel Kova?
For capital reserves, I'm wondering, is there a level of capital reserves that is recommended and is what we're planning for adequate?
We don't currently have a robust capital reserve policy, but I'm looking forward to bringing one to you in the coming months. So we don't have anything earmarked. There's no perfect answer to that, although we know that Department of Municipal Affairs, when they do our FCIs, calculate where we should be. So they want combined reserves, you know, above a certain percentage, and they look at operating reserve, but they don't necessarily pinpoint one or the other. And so looking at our FCIs in the past, we've been, you know, moderate risk on those. So we definitely aren't in the low-risk category for our balances. I guess is the best way to answer where we are right now, and that'll be, you know, for council to decide where you want to be and where you want to go and what the goal is in the next couple of months when we talk about the reserve policies update.
Other questions? Counsel Kova?
We, we have a chart on tax rates, how we stack up. So are those the municipalities, towns that we are similar to, do they all include the same elements in their tax rate? I know that there's a note on Town of New Glasgow excludes solid waste. Are the others?
That one, I think Tammy prepared, but there's no way for us to know easily what it includes because they may or may not include sewer rate. If they have a user pay system that's based on consumption, then it's likely not included. Yeah, it's complicated.
You have to really drill down. And the one, that one was evident, the Town of New Glasgow, because they had a separate rate for solid waste. So when I looked through them to see if there are any thing in addition to that rate, I couldn't find anything. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not something that's not posted on their website. So, and that's kind of always a disclaimer that I use with these is, is you've really got to look behind it and make sure that there's nothing that gets another area rate that gets added on to their rate that's not easily assessed.
If something comes up, we can circle back for sure. Thank you.
Okay, so fire is next. Mike Nos, I did ask if council has any questions in particular about the fire department and the budget items there, that he would be happy to come and speak to those. And both him and the police chief are planning on being here next week when we discuss that. But there are some general things that we can speak to with respects to the fire services budget, and Larry's ready and willing to go.
Okay. With regards to the baseline budget, there's no significant changes. However, there are some additions and deletions. For fire inspections, we added $5,500 for travel for the fire inspector for a car allowance mileage. Under the fire hall billing maintenance, there's $32,000 addition, which includes $7,000 for the lead mitigation program, $8,000 for relocating the fresh air intake, $7,500 for interior painting and some other miscellaneous repairs, and $9,500 for the security camera upgrades. And we're looking to remove the $500 that was included in last year's budget for the lead sampling program.
Any questions on fire? Not seeing anyone. Okay.
Police. So this is, was approved by the board and is being recommended to council. And as I indicated, Scott, police chief will be here Tuesday night to speak to council to the budget if you have any specific questions. But this really kind of highlights, so some of the things that we, we had, council had some desire to see was the revenue that we received from the criminal records checks, that those were transferred to reserve. So you should be able to see that there is a, I believe, operating reserve, $200,000 going into reserve. So that's the profit from, from the, that contract. So that was something that was important to council last year, that we didn't use it to lower the net cost of police services, but rather put it into reserve for a few reasons. One is if you lose that contract, your costs would go up, like shoot up by $200,000. And sometimes that's hard to explain, but it's also an impact. And secondly, we know that there are long-term decisions that need to be made with respects to the home for the police, police services when the lease runs out.
Police station?
Station, yes. Where they're at, the home. It's, so essentially, you want to have a budget to allow you to make some significant decisions with that. In terms of additions, those are noted, noted on the screen, and as I said, Scott can speak to those, but there's not very many additions. 23,500, and that's a buyout of the lease and some internet network, as well as a virtual server that's being purchased. And then there, there are deletions. They revised the contract for renting the detention cells up at the detachment near Corkville. So that went down significantly by $40,000. So that's a good news story. Radio equipment for TMRs were upgraded last year, so they reduced their costs there. And they just reduced their small equipment cost as they acquired it last year.
Questions on police? Counsel Thorburn?
Not a question, but a comment. I know when we first started, that sales were costing somewhere around $100,000 a year. And it's just wonderful what we've been able to do to get it down where it is reasonable and for Marcus to Scott and his staff.
Counsel Kova?
Am I correct in seeing the overall police budget is down about $30,000?
Last year, the budget was 3,950, and this year is 3,981. So it's up by 31,000. The brackets, I know. But, yeah, so it's just, it's up slightly. And that's the net.
Other questions on, see, we probably should have explained that brackets are usually bad.
But in this case, they're good.
That's how, that's how Don used to always explain it to us, right? Brackets are bad, no bracket's good. So I wasn't sure if with the new Director of Finance, we were maintaining that.
We have. We could color code it, too.
I remember my first Director of Finance, it was, sometimes they're bad, sometimes they're not bad, depending on where they were. And I was confused. Other questions on, which is easily done. I know you're laughing. Any other questions on policing? So again, the chief will be here. The two chiefs will be here next Tuesday.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Any questions that you have.
Okay, engineering.
So the engineering key priorities for 2122 includes wastewater comprehensive strategy and phasing plant, wastewater vetement charges, the infrastructure master plan, and market analysis, asset management, of course, our operations and maintenance, our lead sampling program, and the lead remediation for facilities, evaluation of the energy management plan, facility improvements around COVID restart, pump station three pipe replacement, and wastewater treatment plant boiler replacement. Service level increases includes the facility lead remediation program around the lead sampling program, the asset management, and the wastewater vetement charges. So some of the changes to the baseline budget includes electrical 3%, which is $10,000, $11,000 change in salaries increase, $12,000 for retaining wall repairs. We put that back in. We have a number of retaining walls that are showing signs of deterioration. We've increased the street line painting contract or value budget by $10,000. And the additions and deletions, we added $15,000 for the energy management program, which is the cost to extend the contract for the energy manager. We removed $11,500 for renovations around the file room and miscellaneous works. We added We added $9,000 for the upcoming negotiations. We've removed $4,000 for the ergonomic work that was completed last year. We've added $4,500 for an extended warranty and some tires for one of our vehicles. And we've added $17,000 for public works garage for around lead remediation and yard work, but we removed $16,500 for work that we completed for the stairs and the lead sampling. So it was a net change of $500. We've removed $5,000 for screening of asphalt and topsoil. We've added $3,500 for a street light in the vicinity of North Park in York. We've had a few public concerns about how dark that intersection is. And the next two items is actually a duplicate that we have to remove one of those. It's for the same thing. It's in relation to the traffic light tester calibration. We have to send that away to have it calibrated. And we removed $6,000 from the beautification for tree sanitation, and that is the chipping of the branches and stuff at the dump that we periodically do.
Questions? Writing engineering, Deputy Mayor.
Larry, did you say streetlight, this line painting is up 10K? Why?
That, those are, that's the indication for the prices that we received in the multi-year contract.
Oh, okay. And the, the street lighting at York and North Park, we're installing that and responsible for that, not Nova Scotia Power?
We are hoping that it will be covered under another project, but if not, we may have to do it.
Why wouldn't Nova Scotia Power, don't they?
No, not us, no. No, we're hoping it will be part of the business park work.
Oh, okay.
Other questions? Mr. Councilor?
I think we're spending about six times as much on roads as we are on sidewalks. I was wondering if that's, you know, what's the rationale for that? And is that a good balance when we're trying to prioritize active transportation?
It's, when we, I guess, analyzed roads a number of years ago, in order to, I guess, get at each road within a 20-year period, we were looking at about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. Certainly sidewalks, I assume, once we go through the asset management, we're going to see a suggestion to increase that budget as well. We have a capital program of $90,000 as well as our operations for sidewalks, but I suspect there will be a suggestion to increase that as well.
I think the short answer is we don't spend anywhere near what we need to on either to even get ahead, right? The 1.2 just keeps us, and we're spending half of that. So we're always behind. But this is my thanks for the setup to explain to people once again that we pay twice for roads. We pay for all of our roads, and then we subsidize roads outside of town, rural communities, get their roads plowed and paved, maintained by the province, which the Bridgewater taxpayer contributes to, but that is not reciprocal. So our roads are all on our dime, so. Hopefully, there's a change in the roads funding coming. The NSFM has been working on that for, I don't know, decade. There was a roads, when it was the UNSM, I think it was 2014? No, maybe 2000, anyway.
2013, the One Nova Scotia Report, we would have received $112,000 for the Town of Bridgewater for eclectic streets, to collect the town road for the rural streets at Montu Town.
Yeah, there was also an NSF, or UNSM funding formula, a road report done that suggested a new funding formula that would see some rural municipalities fund more of their roads, which would then balance it and allow money to come through, because there are some provincial roads that come through town, right? The Lake House route comes through town. So it would have, it would have equalized those burdens, but.
It's apparently in the minister's office for review.
Well.
Reduced the gas tax funding formula.
Yeah, there's a lot of formulas that need to be.
That need to be overhauled.
Change. But, yeah, as we promote active transportation, it is glaringly obvious that our sidewalks are not held to the same standard as our, as our roads. Other, yeah, go ahead.
I believe at one point, we, we were asked about a, putting up a fence at the park on La Havre Street, and we sort of deferred it to budget deliberations. So I was just wondering if we should.
The one at North Park?
Deliberate that.
The one at North Park and?
Yes, I noticed it's in the budget, but I'm not sure we actually.
You'll decide that.
Yeah, did we decide whether or not?
No, you referred it to this debate.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess I'm bringing it up.
We'll, we'll hit the parks budget. It's in the opposite.
Okay.
It's in the opposite in capital.
The capital.
It's in the capital, yeah.
We'll get to that later.
Yep. Write it down so don't forget.
It's on the list.
Any other questions? Before we move to wastewater? Okay.
So there's no significant changes to the baseline budget for wastewater. Additions and deletions includes $15,000 to, I guess, continue or improve our INI program around smoke testing, and that includes labor, equipment, and materials to improve that program. We're looking to reduce $5,000 for the BayCath testing. Council may recall that they approved additional testing last year, so it was actually $10,000 last year, and there was additional locations and additional frequencies. We're looking to remove the $500 for lead sampling and add $30,000 for the 3,000-hour service for the new centrifuge.
Any questions on wastewater? All right. Parks and playgrounds?
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have an additions sheet on solid waste management, because that's primarily our waste collection contract and our joint services board contribution. So there are no additions. Parks and playgrounds.
Yeah, parks and playgrounds, right there?
Okay. As far as the baseline goes, there was a 3% electrically increase, which is $1,000. As far as the additions and deletions, we're looking to remove $1,200 for the farmer's market porta potty, I guess it was in the town center. It just so happens to fall under the salary grouping, if you see it described as salaries. We're looking to add $2,100 for vehicle maintenance, that's various vehicles based on history of costs. There is the addition of $2,800 for a bridge for the skate park. We're looking for a better connection between the recently created on-street parking to the park, so that would kind of span over the ditch that's there. There was a request to have, I guess, more aesthetically pleasing waste receptacles for the skate park, so there's $6,000 added for that. And the fountain, we originally had the fountain in the budget, and then it was removed. So you'll see a number of costs, the $17,000, the $2,500, the $7,987, as well as the $300. That's all related to the fountain. We've added $5,000 for Generations Active Park wayfinding signage and posts. So each year, we try to do one or two facilities. Probably see the new signs around each of the parks facilities over the last few years. There's $2,500 for the Aberdeen Green for the concrete base for a shelter. They've asked for a, a more improved shelter than what was there in the past. Aberdeen Green, also $5,000 for the wayfinding facility signs and posts. We've added $500 around the groundwork for Aberdeen Green Shelter. And previous year, we had it in the budget last year, but it was under budget. So the $4,800 included the, the cost for the slab, as well as the cost for the sign and the posts, but they were, I'll say, under budgeted, so we took it out and added the increase. The tennis courts, we've increased the cost for water based on history. Woodland Gardens, we removed $4,300. There was some work done around Woodland Gardens, so that was complete. Glen Allen Park, there's $6,000 added. We've had a request from the neighbor for the entrance to the park on Porter Crescent. He's got a number of people that access his property instead of using the entrance, so we're looking to, I guess, deter people or keep people within the entrance. We removed $3,500 from the Glen Allen Park. The facility sign was completed. We removed $1,900 from the Centennial Trail for some ditching that we completed last year. And we've added $5,000 to Riverside Park for redoing the landscaping along the walkway that has settled and has caused, I guess, a safety hazard for tripping.
I just have a question on the, the waste bins at the skate park. Not disputing that we need them, but is there an opportunity maybe to reach out to some local businesses if they want to sponsor them? Like, these things cost a lot of money, like every time, like how many waste bins do we get for $6,000?
I believe it was intended to have two.
Two, like it's, that's just, oh, it's robbery. Sorry to whoever makes those waste bins, but it's criminal, $3,000 each. But I'm wondering, you know, you got a nice flat surface on a waste bin, could you sponsor it? I'm just curious if we ever, we do that, or if that's something the committee can reach out to? Councilor McDonald?
There's a Friends of the Skate Park organization that's been raising some funds. They're coming into the town for any maintenance or any, any uses that they, that are required. And I could ask them if they'd be willing to reach out to some of the organizations that have been supporting the park and ask if anyone's interested in sponsorship.
That'd be great. We've had local businesses support the shelter that's there, right? And a couple others that, I'm wondering, maybe if we could make them ourselves and put the bin, I don't know if that's acceptable, but this seems, seems like a lot of money for two waste bins.
These are the stainless steel ones. You may have seen them.
Just before I contact them, what kind of, what can you put on, like, if they're stainless steel, can you mount things on them to recognize the sponsor?
Likely stickers, I would think.
Larry, isn't there some funding through Region Six and through the province, regional chairs for $0.50 to buy those sorted containers? I'm quite sure there is.
We did, we did reach out to them, and based on what we were told, we wasn't eligible for those specific ones. I think perhaps they were focused around.
I'd reach out to them one more time. We've changed a few people.
Says the chair of Region Six.
And I'll be sending you a report to this, some extra money, Dave, if you want to try some things that hadn't been tried before, there's money there for that, too.
Another question I was, the wayfinding signage, is there a provincial grants for that? The province is all about tourism, and I would think that wayfinding sign, wayfinding signage that points people from outside of town to our trails and parks would qualify, I see, or?
Allison, Allison scopes out, like, grants based on, you know, so I think, don't think anything's been identified, has, for signage?
There isn't a funding specifically for wayfinding, it's often part of other programs. And some of these signs are more the facility signs as part of our overall town wayfinding program, so they may not qualify just to, you know, three facility signs may not qualify for some of these programs, because they want to see this part of larger promotional projects.
Other questions about parks and playgrounds? Deputy Mayor?
Larry, could you repeat the Glen Allen Park, $6,000 for fencing? What's that about again?
So there's an entrance off of Porter Crescent at the bottom that we put in a number of years ago. It's a gravel path, and people are shortcutting and going across the neighboring property. And he's asked that we try to, I guess, prevent people from doing that. So our thought is to put some type of a barrier, not necessarily a fan of fencing, but fencing or hedge or something along the lines that directs the people or keeps the people within the pathway.
Other questions on parks and playgrounds? Moving on to transit.
So transit, the baseline budget actually decreased by $40,000 for the bus maintenance, now that we have new buses. And as far as additions and deletions go, we've added $8,000 for a grant for the e-bus feasibility study. We've added $10,000 for the actual study, so the net difference would be $2,000 cost to the town. We've added $2,000 to provide safety footwear to our eight employees that we haven't, we haven't done yet. And that would be consistent, I guess, with the rest of our employees. We removed the $2,000 for the defensive driving course. We didn't take advantage of it last year because of the COVID, and we're expecting there's going to probably be some limitations again this year. So council may see this the year after, perhaps. And we, I guess, reallocated the $500 to the BMA, now that transit's moved from the fire hall to the, to the BMA.
Questions on transit? Councilor Caldwell?
I just have some reservations about, I know we discussed this earlier, but I do have some reservations about the $10,000 for the e-bus study. Given that, it seems to me highly unlikely that we would actually buy an e-bus.
So this is, this is kind of step one in a multi-step process to, to source funding for an e-bus. So they, it is, 8,000 is funded by grant, so the net cost to us is 2,000 to have the study done. And it's a critical piece in moving to the next stage. If it comes back and deems that it is feasible, then we source the funding, and they'll want to see that study to prove that it is feasible to do so.
You're, you're saying the net cost to us is only 2,000?
Yes, because the revenue, the 8,000 revenue is the grant. But we have to show the full cost. And so that, when you subtract one, it comes to 2,000.
Okay, that's fine.
Other questions? Councilor Donald?
Transit event sales, that would include things like advertising and those kind of revenues?
Yep.
I'm anticipating some excitement with the rural transit funding that was announced today from the federal government. Hopefully, we can tap into some of that. As we know, we've been locked out of federal transit funding due to the way they set up the agreement. Missed it by a few months, which locked us out for 10 years. But hopefully, this new stream, I was assured it is a brand-new stream that we should be able to access, so fingers crossed. Any other questions on transit? All right, next. BMA.
So there's no changes to the baseline budget. Additions includes $2,500 to repair the sprinkler system and do some parking lot repairs. We've added $350, $350 for increased winter maintenance, now that transit will be operating in there year-round. We've removed the $500 for the lead sampling program that was completed last year. We've increased the electrical services, again, now that that's. We've increased the electrical services, again, now that that's being used for transit and other organizations. We anticipate the use will go up for the electricity. We also anticipate because of that that the water will go up, so we've increased the water budget. And we've also increased the janitorial by $5,000 for similar reasons, that there'll be additional cleaning and such now that it's being used differently.
What do we got next?
Yep. I got cemetery there, which is kind of the maintenance side. Are you able to describe that?
Yep, sure. So the additions for the cemetery includes $5,000 to replace the ride on mower. Again, we do that periodically as they wear out. And we've removed $500 for the lead sampling that was done last year.
Yeah, it's on page 44, sorry.
Any questions on cemetery?
One thing you'll note different this year is that this is shown as incorporated within our budget, whereas before it was always shown as a contribution to the Brookside Cemetery Commission, which was dissolved.
Deputy Mayor, did you have a question?
Sort of. You know, I was walking along there on Sunday, I think it was, along Newark, and really noticing the deterioration of the ground around several of the plots and so on. And what kind of program do we have in place to, in essence, top those areas up, so to speak?
It's done, I guess, annually as staff see that, you know, it's necessary to do. So certainly, like, during the spring cleanup program, they'll identify those, and each year, or as needed throughout the year, they're addressed.
And are we responsible for the, I'm having a word in the, the what?
Holmar?
No, the actual stones?
Headstones?
Headstones? Like, so, like...
If they fall over, you mean?
Yeah, no, okay. That's the, whatever, okay.
Other questions on cemetery? Perhaps I'll use this as a moment to please, to ask people that once again, please don't let your dogs use people's graves as a toilet. I got a message again this weekend. It's been a while since I've had one, but there was a time, I think last spring, where I got repeated messages from people who were watching dogs defecate on people's graves. So it happened again this weekend. Like, it's, it's a beautiful place to walk, but it is incredibly inappropriate to let your dog wander through and do that. So I'm just asking people to please respect those who have loved ones there and keep them on the road, please, as you're walking. Next.
Community development.
Community development. Thank you, Mr. Feener.
So as you have in your binder there, some of the key priorities for the community development department are around supporting the wastewater strategy and the betterment charges and beginning to get ready for a planning policy review, affordable housing, open space, recreation, and REC 2.0 implementation, like, online registration, as well as, of course, synergized bridge water. So I've got a few different papers here. We'll start with planning and the sort of So there's an addition here under grants. We have $35,000, and $25,000 of that is related to the municipal fiscal activity leadership program, and $10,000 is related to additional grants, miscellaneous grants that we feel will be eligible for and will be applying to. And so in November, we came to council and we, and you agreed to enter into the municipal fiscal activity leadership program. We're using that, sort of leverage that into a, that funding into a planning tech position to support the increased development, planning and development work in the department. Under the expenditures, there's a variety of additions and deletions. The big, sorry, professional development. So COVID is a big theme throughout this budget, so we reduced our professional development due to COVID. There's a lot of miscellaneous reductions in the budget related to COVID. And in particular, sorry, trying to, it's all rolled up in the sheets that are here, and I'm trying to look at what's on the screen there. So we also reduced, we also have some additions, sorry. With recreation and planning, we've merged some of our administrative line items, so, for example, postage, things like that. So we've removed it out of the recreation budget. We've put it all within the planning budget, so there's a lot of little incremental pieces. With the bring onboarding of a planning tech position, we need an additional ARC GIS license, which we've already purchased. But the additions to the computer software there represent an increase in the annual maintenance fee associated with that license, as well as some additional viewer licenses for staff. And the additional REC cell phones, so because REC is now within the administration of the planning budget, we have some cell phones to replace. The other major increase is related to special planning initiatives. So as per council direction, $25,000 is donated for affordable housing. Also, within our special planning initiatives budget, we made a COVID adjustment to $5,000, but we also have to develop a fiscal activity plan as per the municipal fiscal activity leadership program that we're a part of, so that's sort of an in and an out. And there was also reductions to, same with the department, engineering department, we did ergonomic assessments in 2019, so we've completed some furniture upgrades as a result of that. The Kia is no more. It was surplus and is gone. So that's a reduction in our budget. We reduced our wayfinding and signage budget. There's still some money left in for the downtown gateway sign, but otherwise, we've removed budget associated with that. And then we've also had a few items that have been moved over into the administration department because they're part of the economic portfolio. So they've been moved over for Mark. So the economic action plan also came to an end, and further economic development work will be carried out through the administration department. The facade program was also moved over. And we continue to have funding to support the implementation of the Act of Transportation Plan, but we reduced it from budget, same as what we did last year, sort of reduced it for COVID. Those are the main pieces within the planning budget.
Questions regarding planning?
Why did we reduce wayfinding? It looks so good around town. It's such a, it's a great addition. Like, why drop it?
Because we were looking for money.
That's not a good excuse.
It's a tough budget.
What?
It's not a good excuse.
What would that, what would that mean, reducing it by seven? Like, where would you see the impact, as an example?
I mean...
Just less of it?
Less of it. But as you saw in the parks and playgrounds budget, there's still specific facility signs that are budgeted for, that are part of that program. We will, with that $5,000, we may be able to see if there's a larger part of a project that we could do something and get, find other funding sources for wayfinding. But as you asked earlier, wayfinding is tough because, for funding, because normally, they want to see sort of a larger program, and then we would have to have a lot more than an additional $7,000 to make a real impact. So it's a bit of a catch-22. We'll still see some awesome new signs, though.
Not as many, though. Other questions on the planning part of community development? Then moving on to the recreation part of community development.
That's right. Okay, so in here, it's, we're hopeful for lots of COVID recovery funding opportunities for recreation because, you know, as Tammy pointed out in the overall budget view, there was a significant shift from last year's budget to this year's budget, and that's one of those cases, Councilor Thorburn, where using last year's budget would be very tough because it took such a significant impact due to COVID. So there's a reduction of revenue from various, there's both a reduction of revenue and proposal of new revenue from various sources. So there's a significant student grant funding proposed, and that's because the formula for funding Canada Summer Jobs is very increased. That sounded a little bit awkward, but the funding formula has shifted, and normally, in past years, we get maybe $3,000 in funding. We've also applied for many more positions under the Canada Summer Jobs, so we're hopeful that we will get as much as possible through that funding source. There is also some other funding opportunities that we're seeking to support, some of the REC 2.0 initiatives. And while we move forward in a collaborative effort with our regional partners, we are partnering for our day camp offerings through the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center, and as such, we adjusted our cost of that program, of our day camp programs, to match those of the LCLC, and that is resulting in increase in potential revenue from that. We also have some reductions related to our community garden service, which we brought forward to council a few meetings back. Just to let you know, we have a change in our sponsorship agreement with Health and Nature Heal, so that's reduced from the agreement that we've had for the past five years, and as such, we reduced the expense related with that and still feel that we can provide a high-quality community garden program. We also have, there's a $5,000 in additions, as well as in revenue, as well as in expenditure, and that's related to, we will be trying to find program, funding for basically an adult version of Pro Kids to try to reduce barriers to adults engaging in recreation and leisure But we'll try to seek funding to create that program rather than, that was one way we were trying to manage the budget pressures. And those are the big, the other big shift is that the grants to organizations, program administration moved over into the recreation admin budget, and it wasn't there previously. It was in the administration budget prior to that. So really, REC 2.0, you know, we're online registration program, collaboration with our regional partners, and managing the COVID landscape are the main themes for recreation this year. The pool, sorry, I forgot to mention the pool. And that is, talking about managing the COVID landscape, we've had a lot of great conversations. We will be partnering with the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center again this year for lifeguarding, and they really know the ins and outs and have provided some great advice to Diana as we've been planning how to reopen the pool under the COVID guidance. So it will look a little bit different, but hopefully, not that much different. There is an increase to salaries due to a change in lifeguard salaries, which is resulting from an increase of the minimum wage. There's also an increase for janitorial supplies based on COVID protocols.
Just fingers crossed that we can keep going the way we are and open this pool. It was frustrating last year that it was two different standards for whether the municipality owned the pool or a community owned the pool, and we couldn't open, and neighbors could open. So hopefully, we can open. Questions on any of these in the recreation? Okay, museum?
Hi, there. So in terms of priorities for the coming year at the museum, the list includes expanding programming and public access to the museum itself, increased collaboration with local organizations and artists, and increased frequency of art, culture, and heritage events as the world begins to transition into the post-COVID era, and doing that within the museum 2.0 vision. One of the other priorities includes the execution of the digitization of research documents. You'll recall that council approved some COVID restart funding to facilitate that last fall, so the legwork on that project has begun and will continue over the next several months. In terms of notable additions and deletions within the budget document, the largest requested addition is to change the museum administrator and museum developer positions from part-time to full-time. I believe the council's aware currently that the museum is only open 12 to 4 daily, Monday to Friday, and at current staffing levels, doing much more with the staff resources we have is going to be impossible. So the recommendation is that this change at a fundamental level would allow the museum to be open 9 to 5 daily. So we'd be looking at full-day openings, as well as the option to do expanded openings and events on weekends as well. So that would shift seasonally during the winter months. We tend to be open Monday to Friday. During the summer months, we would likely transition that from Tuesday to Saturday to capture some of our folks who are out and touring around on the weekends. That funding request was made to council referred to budget in December. You'll also note that some money has been reallocated from programming to administrative costs. That's simply to better reflect how that funding is actually being used by the museum. We're not talking about a change in fundamental service levels there. The museum is also budgeting for the purchase of movable storage for the collection. I think that this was something that Lynette talked about with each of you when you did the site tour of the museum last fall. That is noted in this document as an additional expenditure here, but it's contingent on us receiving and offsetting federal grant to the tune of approximately $12,000 to help soften the cost of that project. And under events, there's $3,000, which has been allocated, a request for allocation there, and that's for improved lighting, and specifically comes from the Christmas on the Le Havre Committee, that request. You'll recall that during some unpleasant weather this fall, we had a couple of instances where some of our lighting installations disconnected and shorted out and were non-functional for a period of time. So the recommendation from staff and consulting with Andy Nosson, the actual cost of improving the grade of our lights and the qualities, is to suggest budgeting $3,000 for that.
Questions on museum? The lights, to me, are a no-brainer. Everyone, when the lights were working, everyone was commenting about how great it was. And then, when the lights weren't working, especially this year with COVID, everyone was a little more sad because the lights were out. Poor Cheryl, I think you must have been down there every day trying to plug lights, but I like seeing those in there.
And just related to that, it's worth noting to your worship that when we discussed that at the committee level, staff also indicated that, you know, it's the kind of lighting that could be used not just for Christmas on the Le Havre throughout the year, too, in other forms. So it's something we could conceivably deploy 12 months a year.
Other questions on the museum? Deputy Mayor?
I know when we did a tour of the museum and so on, you know, our grades for the museum are always high. We do really, really well, but yet, funding doesn't follow that same track. Has there been any progress on that?
We continue to hold out hope that that funding formula will change. We know that it is going to be revised at some point in the near future, but there's still an ongoing review process of other museum sites throughout the province, and essentially, we don't think there will be any changes until the other reviews and the other scoring is completed.
And no timeline on that, given by the... And the federal government really only, do they fund only really summer students?
It's on COVID, yeah, yeah.
That's a bit of a miss, too, I would think. Some of those artifacts are quite nationally significant, I would think.
Yeah, one in particular, yeah.
Any other questions on museum? No? Okay, okay. Back to you.
Yeah, so on page 12, you have some information that just shows a little bit more detail on your reserves. So your operating reserve is on 12, and your capital reserve budget's on page 13. So this slide here just gives you a summary of what's coming in and out of your operating reserve to help fund the budget or monies that we're placing into reserves. So you've probably already heard us talk about most of these as we went through, but the estimated balance as of March 31, 2021 would be $7,261,000. And then you have some funds coming out, Canada Day, that we placed in there because we weren't, I think that was placed in last year because we didn't spend. Landfill closure, we have a balloon payment that will seem, due, so we'll see... Landfill closure, we have a balloon payment that will seem, due, so we'll see money go back in, wastewater, that's the charge that will result in us being able to put more money in reserve. And then we're, Kim mentioned that we have a number of capital carry-forward projects that we budgeted for last year, it had its revenue associated with that, and because we have such a surplus, we're suggesting that we take that revenue and move it with the capital projects that we're carrying forward, so those have to go into reserve and come out to fund that. And then we're using $860,000 to fund capital projects, so that's down, as Kim mentioned, that was $1.2 million last year, so, and given the pressures that we've had in the budget, and to balance it, we reduced that down to $860,000 to be funded from reserve. And then there's the COVID safety start, that money we've had to put in reserve because we didn't have the projects done, and we're pulling that back out, so we're taking it out of reserve to fund those projects in the budget. And then there's the two operating costs that we're referenced that we had in our budget this year, and rated for, and that would be the parking study, as well as the North Parkade repairs, so that was a total, one was $40,000, the parking study and North Parkade work was $20,000, so that would be $60,000, that we would take out of reserve, put in, take out to fund those projects in '21, '22.
Any questions on the operating reserves?
You see the balance does go down to 5.8.
Capital. Tammy, the money for the police department, does that go into operating reserves or capital reserves?
That goes into operating, does it just un-designated, or?
It would go in as designated.
I don't see it designated.
It's not, no, because these, we don't have that one showing going in. But should be?
I would think it should be, because we had money in there from last year as well.
Yeah, so, well, there is money in there from last year, yes, so we'll add the 200, we can revise that to show it.
Yeah, it's like the deed transfer tax, once we get to see it by itself, it makes more sense and group with something else. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So your capital reserves, so this is how much you have estimated as of March 31st, 2021, 2.9, $2,955,000. So you have $675,000 at the beginning gas tax funding, that's going in, and then we're withdrawing $1.7 million to fund capital, and then there's interest income that goes in and stays with that at $54,000. So your balance will be $1,910,303 at the end of the fiscal year, so March 31st, 2022. We did get an announcement last Friday, I think it was, after the budget was done, that said that we're going to have double the gas tax funding this year, so we'll make those adjustments, and council can decide how they wish to use that. So you can't just use gas tax on anything, it has to be capital, and it has to fit within the eligibility criteria for spending. So if you don't have anything, so we have some wastewater projects, but they have grants already, and you can only stack supply, but so if we don't, we will. We'll put it in reserve and use it in a future year, or council, if we have projects eligible, council can decide to not borrow for something, or not, you know, you can decide.
We can split it up.
Yeah, but it has to be for eligible projects.
Would that build a pickleball court?
I don't know. Pickleball court?
Counsel call off.
What is the, what is the increase in the gas tax that we'd be getting, and when would we look at that?
So it's 675 is what we get annually, so it's just doubling it, it's another 675, and the details will come out about when we're getting that, which might time, kind of how we use that, right? But the de facto is reserve, and it has, it goes into a gas tax fund, right, so it doesn't get gobbled up into our regular capital, and then you can only, as I say, spend it on eligible projects.
So, will that be reflected in our new budget that we're going to approve?
Yes, we'll make that change, it's just we weren't making it on Friday.
No, no, I say that, I had it marked down, it's a question, so there it would be.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
Counsel call off.
How do we estimate the long-term government funding that we may receive?
We don't, we base it based on what we know. So in your capital plan, you'll see, like if you look at, finally, the next slide, which is the 10-year capital plan, you'll see kind of other government right here, so this, we know gas tax, right, because there's a funding agreement that sets it out, so other government would be whether it's investing Canada infrastructure funding, mainly that's what it is for our wastewater, those numbers we know.
So those are simply, yeah, those are facts, that's what we sort of have in the bank, we're planning on that.
Smart cities would be in there and that, yeah.
Is it reasonable to expect, though, that we will receive quite a bit more money than is shown there? Is that fair?
We traditionally, like this is the minimum we're going to get, but we've been very deliberate at budgeting for only what we know, so, and we've never really had a grant coordinator, so I would argue that grant coordinator, I will hope, will be effective at getting more grants, but again, council's been very deliberate at, like this is planning for the worst, it's like the deed transfer, right? Every year, we get more deed transfer tax in revenue than we thought, or snow plowing, you know, we've been way under, but we plan for the worst, and then we don't have to come back six months and say, we're going to have a massive deficit because we didn't plan properly.
Yeah, and what these grants would do is obviously less than the amount that we have to borrow, and when Kim did our analysis on our debt affordability, it takes a big, big number to make a change, so a couple million dollars here and there on a wastewater project isn't going to have a significant impact on our debt affordability, but we definitely will source them and apply for them, and adjust the capital budget as we move forward through the years. And right now, we're just sitting waiting for a grant program to open, so we can apply. So there's been all kinds of announcements about rolling that investing Canada infrastructure funding up, it's not new money, they're just moving it forward so you can get at it sooner, but there's no intake yet. So, when we get in there, we'll definitely be hopefully adjusting those numbers.
I would imagine that, you know, post-COVID national recovery, the government will unleash a lot of money. The frustration is going to be if they unleash money based on the formulas they currently use, which are population-based, which means communities with a lot of infrastructure will receive less money than communities without infrastructure, because our population is smaller. So we see that with the gas tax, right? So rural communities get twice as much money for infrastructure projects that in many cases they don't qualify for. So, the big push, I'm hoping, from NSFM and FCM this year will be, if you do it needs-based, then nobody can argue if they got enough money or not, right? Because that way, you know, if you prove the need, you should get the money, and if you can't prove the need, why should you, why should you sit with $18 million in reserves because you just couldn't spend that money? We have a $50 million-plus wastewater problem that we have 16 years to fix, and if the government only gives us $700,000 here, a couple hundred thousand dollars there, I mean, I would think it's impossible to meet that target. So, there needs to be a give, so while this, to your question, while it plans for the worst, I just can't see a scenario where they, they would let a community fail because we're doing all the right things, so, fingers crossed.
So that kind of moves us into our capital budget.
Before we go there, Tammy, if I may, that surplus that we have that's going back into reserves, does that reflect on these documents that we have here in front of us now, or will that be added later?
In terms of the?
That $189,000?
And the operating reserve?
No, the surplus.
It's?
That $1,890,000 that we expect will be in surplus.
Well, it's in the opening number.
Yeah.
It's in there now?
Yeah.
And the balance, yeah.
The operating reserve in the binder?
I see it here, I thought it was, but I just wanted to ask the question.
It's in the, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yes.
In this, because this almost tells you what happens at the start of this year versus you're talking about, or the start of next year, but you're talking about what will be lost here.
On page 12.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at 12, 13 now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the end of the year at the $2,520,000, the surplus is in there.
Okay. I thought so, but just wanted to ask to make sure.
Yeah, so it has to go there.
Yeah.
Okay, so your capital is, this is just a slide that shows at a high level your 10-year capital plan, we do have the detail to support every year, and this is something that we kind of use to help us understand our debt affordability, to help understand the implications of tax rates, and to help council prioritize their infrastructure budgets as well. And so we did review the capital budget in late January, early February, and as I indicated, we did have a few changes to that. But before we get into that, I thought maybe Kim could spend a few minutes just talking about the debt affordability model. The numbers, the capital budget number has gone up slightly to 14.2, we'll show you those differences. So this year, you can see that we'd be borrowing $6 million to support this budget, capital budget, we'll be using capital from operating of 1.6, gas tax of 1.46, capital reserves of 309,000, we'd be funding from the tax rate 860,000, and we have grants of 3.9 million. And this year, in our capital budget, the big one's wastewater, as well as EX 12A, so there's 3.2 million, and then next year, you'll see that again, that we have that commitment again, the following year, 3.2, and then in '23, '24, it goes down to a million. But wastewater continues as a theme throughout the capital budget, so. What Kim does with this information is she runs the debt affordability piece, which council should be familiar with, we have shown you this before, and it shows you kind of where you can expect your, you know, Kim can talk to you about the assumptions that are in this model, but kind of what you expect your surplus and deficits to be, and the takeaway really is, is that, that's, assuming all the assumptions Kim has, say, next year you would have, say, a $200,000 surplus, but if you have an increase in the LCLC capital budget, or the Joint Services Board, or education, or a number of things, that's, you know, it's a tenuous number, in the sense that it could be impacted, so just, you know, keep that in mind when we're thinking about future years as well, but maybe Kim can come down and go over the model quickly.
So, the debt affordability model that we're showing you is just one page of a much bigger set of spreadsheets, so, and it's also extremely tiny on that screen, I realize. I don't know if Tammy can zoom in, but, you know, the most important are the, you know, the percentages across the very bottom, and it is also reflected elsewhere in your, I can't tell you what page number it is, the debt ratio, even just the charts.
Page 11.
Page 11, just gives you a visual of where our debt service ratio is going, so, for '21, '22, 6%, which is still reasonable, but as we work our way through the capital budget over the next 10 years, and the borrowing that you saw on the last slide that Tammy showed, you know, at six and seven million dollars a year, our debt repayment on that becomes the issue. So, by the time we hit, and I know we kind of talked about, you know, when we hit 15%, and it kind of moves depending on your assumptions, but right now, we're projecting to hit over 15%, 15.63 in '27, '28. Now, we do have to make some assumptions in this model in order to get these numbers that are here, so some of the major assumptions that we made was that we were going to have tax assessment growth of 3%. We know there's a lot of projects, David, Mayor Mitchell talked about that earlier in the presentation, that, you know, there's a lot of development happening and so on, but we also talked about what's happening with commercial properties right now, so we have to make some assumptions in the long term of where revenue's going to go. Do we know in three months or six months? No, but our hope is with what we're seeing now, that's higher. We're also assuming 15% rate increase in the sewer rate as we're implementing our new strategy on sewer rates, and a 2% increase in other revenue growth, and most expenditures between 1.7 and 2.5%, depending on CPI and things like that, but again, we're just trying to look at trends, not necessarily at specifically what we think is going to happen in any individual year. So, when that happens, right about the middle of that slide, talks about surplus or deficit. And so, with some assumptions made, you know, we do have some money that, or it projects out that we could have some monies to put in reserve, or to borrow less, but we're not talking multimillion-dollar-a-year surpluses that would be impactful to our debt service ratio, but it keeps us with a balanced budget. So those are some of the kind of keys there. Tammy also mentioned that we're assuming no new services, and no significant increases in our other costs that are somewhere between mandatory and commitments that we have, such as the LCLC capital projects, and operating municipal joint services board, and so on, if we have increases that are above and beyond the 1.7 to 2.5%, then we're going to have to compensate for those somehow.
It's painful to look at, not just because it's small, and I'm getting older.
The next time we talk about it, we can print some 11 by 17 or something.
You know, we have a lot of costs coming up, but I look at, I look at what we're doing, and at least, you know, you're talking pipes in the ground, you're talking the realignment of the business park, the new exits, so it's, it's things that have a return on their investment at the end, right? If we don't replace the underground infrastructure, then we continue to overflow into the river, which we know we're not allowed to do, but even if you remove that from, even if they said you were allowed to do it, shouldn't be doing it, and at some point, like we wouldn't be able to grow. So you make an investment in the infrastructure to continue to grow, as you grow, you have more taxpayers, you have more taxpayers, everyone shares the burden a little bit less and less and less because you have more people to share the burden, so you do the work, in my thought, to break this cycle, right? Because at some point, you get the work done, and then you can start to come back down, so. All that to say, it's quite painful to look at it the next 10 years, but there's an end to it, at least, versus, I look at, especially in COVID, a lot of municipalities further west, like outside of Nova Scotia, where this, this cycle is not based on investments in infrastructure, or pipes in the ground, or roads, or an interchange, it's due to just declining revenue and spiraling costs that have their debt service ratio going up to 15%, and they can't figure out why. So, that's my little, at least for me, as someone who also lives in the town, like everyone in this, around this table, it's getting something that's going to have an impact for years, so.
All right, so your capital budget, as I indicated, you saw this in February, and there had been a few changes, so we went from 13.6 to 14.2, and then capital from operating changed from 1.8 to 1.6, and so we had to reduce some of what we were funding grants, we've got a 3.9 instead of 3.1, gas tax, again, just how we fund things is changing a bit, and this slide here shows you kind of what's changed. So, the North Parkade deck, when you looked at your capital budget last time, and your capital budget for this year is included, you had asked that we remove the deck, the aesthetics, we called it North Parkade aesthetics, but it was really dealing with the debt, and that was 350,000, and you asked for that to be removed, and rec- And that was 350,000, and you asked for that to be removed in recognition that we were doing a parking study, and that parking study would give you some indication about what the need is for parking on the North Parkade. So staff are, as we looked for ways to reduce and address the budget pressures and bring the budget in at zero, looked at what other things we could possibly look at that may have had some funding from operations. So remember, we went from a 1.2 to 860,000 from funding from operations. Some of that was because, well, it was because of capital cuts. So the North Parkade railing was one of them that had some funding coming from the operating budget. And we know that we're doing the study in 2021, so we're suggesting you may want to hold off on that investment until you know what investment you're prepared to make. The wastewater treatment plant condition assessment, we moved that out a year, and that was 120,000. Bridgewater Memorial Arena, we had 115 in the capital budget. We reduced that down to, I think it was 75, because 40,000 of that is actually under the COVID restart funding. So we were creating some additional office space so that we could space staff out. So we're still doing it. We're just funding it through the COVID restart and reducing the amount in the capital. Culvert replacements, again, a capital item funded from your operating budget, suggesting that we don't have that budget there this year. Guard rail replacements, same thing. The public works garage, there were two overhead doors proposed, and we reduced that down to one. So cut that by 10,000. Crosswalk improvements, we could pull that out this year, and that would be 10,000. And then the energy management plan, we reduced that down from 164, I believe it was, down to 81,300. So we took the police station out, I believe, of that in terms of energy management improvements there. And so that saved 81,300 from being funded from operations. And then we have a list of capital carryforwards, which are projects we budgeted this year. We're partway through. We'd like to carry them forward, so we complete them, and we'll bring the funding that we had allocated last year with them to go with that. So those are the changes in the capital budget, and I believe there was some questions about projects. This would be the opportunity to, if there are questions about projects in the capital budget that are proposed that you may want to revisit or consider prior to approving.
Yeah, so on page 47 of your.
Yep.
Your binder, you've got, you've got the 2021, '22 post-capital budget. In there, I believe, is the, on 49 is the 12,500 for the chain link fence that Council Caldwell had mentioned before. Maybe what we'll do is we'll just, I'll just say, ask, on page 47, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns with items that are in there? Instead of just going line by line, we'll just, assuming everyone's looked at their budget. Council Caldwell?
I'd just like, just a clarification about the town-owned decorative lights. It's a fairly large budget item, just a clarification.
Yeah.
What that is.
So those are the streetlights that you see on King Street, the poles and the, yeah.
I think they put a couple up today.
The black ones?
I think like in front of RBC, the nice old-fashioned.
Right, and so that's currently underway, and the plan is to just do all of them? That's what the?
That's a carryforward, I believe.
Yeah. I think we own them all now. I think you have them all on site now, right?
Yeah.
It's just the installation now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council Thurber?
Item one, the half-ton number 58. I went into last year's, and I've printed on, and I don't see last year where it was showing being replaced in this year's budget, but it was added. And I think a Ford Escape should have been replaced this year, but that was taken out. I just wonder why those two items were swapped.
Do you want to, maybe Mr. Feener can?
In the decorative lights, you show under wastewater. It probably should be engineering or something other than wastewater department.
Just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just change that.
Yeah, good catch there. So do you, just, your question, let's start with the half-ton truck.
Yeah, number 58, it wasn't in there last year to be done this, next year, but I see you brought it back.
Is on page 48 of last year's budget.
I checked. I didn't see it here. I've got it in my hand. But anyway, you had number, last year, you should, Ford Escape number 87 would be replaced in '21, '22.
So we've changed that, where we're replacing the Kia with a truck. So the Kia is being replaced with a truck this coming year. The 58 is actually a carryforward, so that's already in the group.
Okay.
So it's a matter of delivery. We won't have it delivered by the end of the year.
Okay.
Any other questions on page 47? I have, moving to page 48. Are there any questions, any capital items? Council Caldwell?
So Bridgewater Memorial Arena is there. I do support that project, but I, I just want to know that, is council prepared to move forward with our plan, multi-year plan for that arena? Because if not, I'm not sure we should be spending the money this year.
So the money this year is to, so we did some renovations last year. We put in a bay door and made it so that we could store our buses in there for transit, and then recreation has storage in there. And we're looking at some office space for park staff, so that's kind of an existing use in there, so we're occupying the building now. So what's proposed this year is maintenance, basically. It's roof repair and wall rot. So if you don't do it, your investment from last year will kind of go by the wayside eventually, because they're necessary repairs to keep the structure.
There's renovations being done in the auditorium area though, right?
No, so that's a future year. So we had a couple more years of proposed renovations. That would be based on, so there's lots of off-ramps, right? So we'll come back to you with, Patrick had it broken up in terms of doing the renovations to enable the farmer's market to go inside and occupy part of that space as well. But that will come to you next year in next year's budget, and you would consider that at that time. And then the next phase was the auditorium for the social players. So this year is, you can do these renovations and not be committing to that long-term plan, because these are necessary for what's in there.
So in fairness, on doing these renovations, if we don't do them, and we have to move them, we're looking at nearly $2 million to build a facility for the two services to host there now.
Yeah.
Right?
That this was an alternative to building a brand-new building, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Other questions on page 48?
I just have a question about the interchange total budget. I know the total budget says there's 7.4 million. Was it initially a bit more and then?
It's 8.4.
8.4, okay, so that total budget just reflects?
The 3.2, and then the 3.2 must have dropped off the million that we gave this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't look backward. It doesn't look back at what we previously spent.
So it is total?
Total is 8.4, so a million this year, and then starting in '21, '22, and 7.4 is remaining.
Okay.
So what's completion date on that interchange?
Oh, of 2022.
22 October, I think.
That's a pretty aggressive timeline.
It is.
I was asked that question the other day. Scared the answer.
No, it is a very aggressive timeline.
Yeah.
It's not our timeline.
I know, I know. It's nice to see it being done.
David Mayer?
The 81.3 that we've dropped for the energy management plan, is that, that's not in this list? That's not the 80?
That's what's left.
Okay, that's what's left, okay.
That's what's left, yeah. Yeah, it was 164.5, and we cut 81.3.
And the 81.3 that we cut was for the police station, right?
Yes.
So safe to assume that that's just cut now? It's not going to appear next year?
Doesn't appear to be put back into the future budget.
No, that's, that's good. I'm just looking, like, we don't own the building. There's, I think, a decade left on the lease, so I wouldn't want to put major capital into a building we don't own that we may or may not choose to stay in. Like, we've got lots of time to make those decisions, and the time will come, but I don't think the owner could do it if he'd like. I just, that was my, just didn't want to see it appear. I hope it's not being pushed out as well. Any other questions on page 48? Page 49. So, Council Caldwell, yeah?
So for pavement renewal program, there's $80,000 in debt financing going into pavement. Is that just typical? Will we do that each year?
We need to fund some of it from debt. Kim, do you have last year's budget there?
Probably easiest if Kim comes down to this, or even just because we'll be looking here at, here who are watching online.
Last year it shows debt financing of $330,000.
For pavement renewal?
Pavement renewal.
Yeah, so, yes.
And 70 from gas tax reserve to make up the 400,000.
No, I found it, but I have different numbers, so.
I'm just looking at.
But you're looking at what was in the binder last year, not what was in the final? So perhaps you guys need changes from the binder to the final. But the final printed one that I have, making sure I have the right here, says that we funded 600,000, 500,000 for gas tax, and 100,000 from debt financing. Okay, yeah. So we have funded it through a combination, including debt.
It's kind of one of those ones where I think, once we figure out the funding for the other projects, we use whatever's left of gas tax, whatever's used left of capital from operating, and some of it just ends up being debt or whatever it needs to be if we've got no other funding sources for it.
Our baseline for paving is usually a minimum of 400,000, and then we go up from there, right?
Minimum, yes. So previous years, it was actually 600 in capital and 200 in all of them, so it is 200,000 less.
Right, sorry, I mean for capital.
It's less this year than last year.
So we're less this year, 200,000?
But we have 200 in operating.
Yeah, so it is still 600.
Well, last year was 800 in total, yeah.
And that's the funding for pavement, I think you mentioned earlier, that's based on a study of some sort that was done a few years ago?
It was just an internal review.
Okay.
We did it a number of years ago, yes. And it was approximately 1.2, 1.3 million if you want to do something to all of your roads within a 20-year timeframe.
And that was, I'm sorry, how much per year was estimated?
It was around 1.2, 1.3 million. So there are other projects, though, that, for example, you'll see Pearl Street may not be a great example because that's gravel, but other capital projects would also have road work within it. So you are getting other improvement in other capital projects.
So are we close to meeting that goal?
You're probably still under, but it would depend each year, depending on the capital projects that you're doing.
Okay.
Speaking of Pearl Street, so, you know, we heard from the residents, and, you know, it's a dirt, section of that's dirt and it should be paved. There is construction going on with the new development there. Is this the year to pave that while that's ongoing? Is it better to wait one more year and then reassign this 225 to pavement renewal elsewhere in the town?
It would be an option. We understand that the construction that they've been doing so far, they've been using both access points, whether it be from Victoria or from out of town. So there may be a bit of, I guess, a conflict, but certainly the area where the new access will be, we won't be doing that until after the new services are put in for that development. We specifically did not do that last year for pavement management because we knew there was going to be some work coming up.
So I'm still wondering if it makes sense to do it all at the same time and just wait till you're ready to do the whole thing? Wouldn't that be cheaper than doing two different sections?
It certainly would be an option, a little bit different work, because the gravel area, we'll have to include some gravel work where the previously paved area, it's more milling and asphalt, so it's a little bit different work. But we likely would get, I guess, get better pricing if it's done as a larger project.
Yeah, so I guess for me, then I'd like, I'd like to see that Pearl Street pushed out one year, and that 225 reassigned to the item above, just the pavement renewal program, and staff determine where it gets the most bang for its buck.
Yeah, I agree. I'd support that.
Makes sense.
So pavement renewal increased by 225 and funded from operating reserve?
That's where, because that's where you had the Pearl Street.
Yeah.
Anyone object to that? Have consensus on that? Sandra's not here. I presume someone's taking notes.
I know, I'm scared.
You say you're scared? Scared of Sandra?
Of what would happen if I, yeah.
We didn't, yeah.
Yeah, she knew notes had to be taken, and they weren't being taken.
Okay, so we're still on page 49. Any other items on page 49?
Council Caldwell? Just the fence at St. Philip's Street, maybe an explanation of what that is, why it's needed?
So we had a request from the property owner, might have been pre-October perhaps, wherein we were doing work there as part of the St. Philip's and North Park intersection, and it impacted the park. And the neighbor came to council and indicated that his property is impacted by the park. It's an existing condition, and I don't believe it's exacerbated by the work that's being done, but basketballs, things are making their way into his yard, and he's not overly happy about that. So he had asked that we consider putting up some type of fencing so that it eliminates that from happening. And we do have fencing that runs along the back, right? So it's running along the side in between the two properties?
Along the street frontages, there's change.
Right, yeah, to keep the balls from going on the road, but where they can go on the neighboring properties. So council did indicate that they would consider that request as part of our budget. We couldn't get it, we tried to get Department of Transportation to include it as part of the project budget, because they were moving the courts a bit, I believe, closer to his property, and so he felt the likelihood of balls going into his yard would be increased by that. But they didn't agree that it was part of the project because it's an existing line and that that situation exists now, so they weren't prepared to fund it. So they came back to the town, and so council just indicated that we would consider it as part of our budget.
Didn't we say that we was going to ask him, see if he would consider paying part of it where it's to his benefit as well?
We said we would have that conversation with him to see if he wanted to make an improvement to the fence, because the fencing that we were proposing was chain link, wasn't, so it wasn't very ornamental in any way. And if he wanted to improve upon the walk, he could do so, but it hasn't taken us.
No, we haven't negotiated until we see where the budget will go.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm just a little unsure why we are paying the whole, like, the park's not new. Basketball courts aren't new.
No, they're moved closer to his property.
And has it, is it for sure a problem, like?
I can tell you from personal experience.
I can tell you from personal experience, it's a problem.
Is it?
Recently, it's a problem.
Is it, is it due to your basketball skills?
No, mine, no.
No, okay. Because I was, if it was, I was just going to say, there's no fence needed.
I was part of the Globetrotters at one point.
Let's get your job to get around the world.
They're out there playing basketball in the wintertime, Mike, to see the cars there, I mean, every day.
That's, I mean, I'm okay resolving a problem, I just didn't, I think when the request first came, my interpretation was, I think this is going to be a problem.
Right.
And I don't want to spend twelve thousand dollars on a, I think this is going to be a problem. But if it's, if it's a problem that we've created by moving the basketball court, well, that's, that's different than.
We didn't move the basketball courts.
Well, the province moved the basketball court.
About how long a fence would this be, do you know?
I believe it goes right from North Park Street to the back corner of his property. It's, it's a fair distance.
Is a chain link fence going to be high enough?
It will in this particular case.
Not a big issue, is it?
You're the hoops.
Other questions on page, answer right now and then that's in, that stays in, Deputy Mayor?
When are we expected to construct the water tower?
That's a great question. So there was a funding application made and we haven't heard, we didn't make the application, our partner did, and because it would be their project. We would have the asset conveyed to us once constructed, so they haven't heard that. So I believe it hinges on funding.
Did we make a decision on the fencing, sorry?
So right now, nobody's asked for it to be removed, so. So, yeah, the fencing will stay in unless people want to discuss that. Anything else on page forty-nine? Page fifty. You get a lot of mileage out of those lawn mowers, those zero-turn mowers. There's like three items there, any questions? Okay.
So just one change to that, which is the Pearl Street paving, push out a year and reallocate that funding that was in this year's budget to pavement renewal?
Yes.
So can, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Because there wasn't, the Pearl Street paving was a new project and there wasn't funding for that at the time, we were choosing to fund it out of the undesignated operating reserve. So it's not, in my opinion, it wasn't that there was funding, it was because it was unfunded, we were going to have to use some of that surplus. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that we'd be then putting, we're taking it out of that operating reserve to fund paving project.
So it's still an addition?
Yep.
Yep.
Just want to make sure everybody knows that, where the funding was coming from for that.
Everyone's aware of that?
Okay, so the capital budget does have, or Kim's budget does have a list of capital carry forwards. And because these are due to expire March thirty-first in terms of funding, we would like counsel to address the capital carry forward. So you've already approved some, there was a report that came to you back in, what time?
It was January twenty-fifth.
January, okay. And those are the first list with the pink heading, so you can approve those. And then we have projects to add to that, which are under the second table, it says projects added March twenty-twenty-one. And so it's indicated, these are in the twenty-twenty, twenty-one capital budget. The funding sources are noted. And it's proposed that we carry that forward into the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget so these projects can be completed. You'll note the percentage, so some of them are almost near completion, some of them are a bit of a way through and some have just been started, so we would need a motion.
There were a couple other adjustments to that original list in the written report because we moved the, I think it's the Park, North Parkade, one hundred and ten thousand out further. And then we adjusted the energy efficiency down to sixty thousand from a hundred thousand. That was approved. So there were, there was one reduction and one removal since the last time you saw that report in January. So that was the first table, and then the second table are new additions.
So this is the revised.
So that is the revised total.
All right, so we could just reprove the revised January twenty-fifth list and the March, the add-ons for March twenty-twenty-one.
Is someone prepared to make that motion? Counsel Auburns, we're approving the capital carry forward revised, as presented by staff, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Discussion on this, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Deputy Mayor?
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
So the, if we don't expense the water tower in this fiscal coming up, does that go into reserve? How do you typically handle that?
Well, I think we're choosing the reserve that are paid for the water tower out of the operating reserve, undesignated funds. So they would just stay in the undesignated reserve until you were ready for it.
Okay, do we get interest on that?
On our reserves?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, some of the operating.
The operating reserve, we transfer that interest income to general operating though, so we use that for our operations. So if we have it in there, it benefits our operating fund. But at this point in time, when we review the reserve policies, you can look at that.
All right, so what's next? We presented the budget to you, you might, we have two more dates set aside for budget deliberation. April sixth is next Tuesday, and if we need the seventh, then we'll do it then, with the tentative approval date of April twelfth. One thing to remember is that any change made requires an offset. So if you want to take something out, that's great because then, then there's money and then we probably just put that in reserve, so you have a reserve contribution. But if you want to add something to the budget, we need to take something out or find another way to fund it, like reserves or something like that. But it needs an offset in some way. So.
Are there any questions, Counsel McDonald?
So if somebody contacts us over the next few days or something comes to mind and we think that we might suggest a change, it's best to let you know in advance at the next meeting, is that right?
So if you have any questions or you want to make any suggestions, I think as the mayor indicated, if you, if you can email myself and copy counselors, I'll make sure that management get it. And then we can then have that response for the meeting so that the public can hear what it was and kind of what the, what the answer is as well. So just any question about what's in here and why, or what would happen if we added this, how would, how could we fund that?
Before we adjourn, are there any other questions about anything that's in the budget?
So to confirm, there is a budget meeting on April seventh?
No, there's one on the sixth, and if we, if we can't.
We need it.
It's only if we need it. So, so far, so good tonight, but questions come up and if we, we need it, we'll use it. Counsel Caldwell?
I was simply wondering about the long-term capital budget? If we had questions about that or suggestions? I guess this is the forum?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You're not, you're not approving, you're not being asked to approve the ten-year capital budget. We're required to submit, I believe, is it ten years now or five, is it ten?
You can choose between five and ten.
To the province, you know, as part of our capital investment plan. But it's, it's recognized that what you're approving is the upcoming fiscal year. And then the rest is just that, it's a plan. So next year it might look a little different as things arise, but it's kind of what, what we foresee right now.
So certainly if you saw something next year and you thought, that should be this year, then that's normally where we would talk about next year's capital budget, is bringing it this way. If it's something that you think should go the other way, it's probably what we would talk about next year.
Yeah, so if it's something that's a few years out, I'm thinking, oh, I wonder if council would consider moving that up. That's not necessarily a discussion we have to have during this budget session.
If it doesn't impact, if it doesn't impact this, this budget year, then you can have that at any point. And we will be coming back to council and like to look at the capital budget again and next year again, like in late December, early January, to say, here's your capital budget for the upcoming fiscal year and here's your ten-year capital plan. So we can always revisit it that time too, or you can bring it up at any point.
So a great example would be the Memorial Arena, right? So in the fall, for example, if, if it looks like social players or someone is wanting to move forward with that, we'd talk about that then, even though it's not really, that component isn't, isn't in this year's budget. So it's kind of, other questions? Counsel Conklin?
Excuse me, King Street Parking. Look like, yeah, carries administration cost. So what is, what's that, the forty-two thousand?
That's by law enforcement. So like for parking tickets and that type of thing. And issuing permits, passes. It doesn't, this doesn't include like capital or anything like that. So if you're looking at, does our revenue offset our expenses? No, not even just on an operating basis, they don't, but when you factor in the capital and there's.
Well, no, the capital for the North Parkade is in here.
No, this is just off. So it'd be, what would the, what would the operating on North Parkade be, Larry, just plowing the parkade? Plowing, salting, signs, yeah.
The parking study is under administration.
And that's under administration, okay.
So our bylaw enforcement officer basically falls in under, rolls up to King Street Parking more or less?
For part, part of his wage would, would it not? And then part, part of it would be, because he does bylaw enforcement for.
He only works a couple days a week, yeah. Is that in the forty-two, Kim, the admin?
No, that's the parking study. Does he fall under the police station?
He might, but I don't know why I thought.
There's law enforcement in the police budget.
Okay, so we don't charge that out to King Street Parking?
I thought, I thought part of it was, part of it was applied to King Street Parking and then part of it would be applied to other duties, right? Because he, he does bylaw for, I mean, there's, we have bylaws everywhere.
We can drill into that and make sure, because there's something else besides the parking study in there.
Other questions? Counsel Caldwell?
I was just wondering about, so snow clearing, are we at some point going to have, are we going to deal with that at a discussion session?
In terms of service levels?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean.
You mean like street, sidewalk, trail?
Well, streets and sidewalks for snow.
When we go out, how, how long, how much snow has to come down, that type of thing?
Um, I was more wondering about the money we're putting into it, if we invested, you know, more, what service level would that?
Sure, yeah, because staff had done up a, a presentation on that back in February, I think it was. It was after one of our snowstorms anyway. And it kind of provided, here's our level of service and the cost to do that. And if we wanted more, it would cost more. So at that time, we had proposed, now my memory's coming back, a team's, team's meeting to kind of review it. My, the date might not have worked for everyone. So we can certainly bring that to a discussion session because the work's been done, put into the, put into the presentation. So Kim, you just have to say you want it there and we'll, we'll add it.
I mean, it's inevitable because we're, right now, we're doing trail work in the winter, right? That's new, we've been doing it for COVID feedback, I've got, I'm sure you've got, it's been very, very positive. But that was what we did for COVID, we used some of the COVID restart money. So if that's a level of service you want to add, then council has to have that discussion. So it probably gets lumped into the whole snow clearing, what do we want our levels of service to be? So that, for sure, that'll be a discussion session.
Do you want that sooner rather than later, or do you want it a little later on in the year?
Well, once we get clear budget.
So like, May, June?
Well, certainly well before the snow comes back.
When the pressure's off.
I haven't undergone it already, that's it for snow until late December.
All right, so we'll plan something like in the June.
Yeah, with enough time to let Larry and his team prepare for whatever.
Yep, okay.
Council determines.
If we, if we did choose to increase service level, we wouldn't have to prepare for that in the budget necessarily. We could find money somewhere for that.
If it's going to impact, if it's going to impact this coming fiscal year, then we, we should probably know that now because we're balanced. So if you want to increase service levels midway through the year, we would have to either look to see if we're projecting a surplus, which would be hard to do in June, or we'd be pulling from reserve to do that, right?
Now, we've, we've had a surplus the last four, five years. So is this something we could, like if we.
In, in snow removal or, yeah? I mean, you could look at your reserves to, to fund an increase in your service level. I mean, ideally, we would know when we set the budget, but if you want something midway through the year, that would be our option.
I'm just wondering, like, if we, if we've had a surplus, I mean, there's no guarantee, it's weather, right? So who knows? But if we, if we plan as we always do for this much snow and we tend to now be getting this much snow, wouldn't an increase of level of service, if we didn't reduce the budget, we just kept it?
You would, you'd be rolling the dice.
Because you're rolling the dice no matter what, right? So we could say add a hundred thousand dollars to the budget to enhance the service and then have a two thousand fifteen, sixteen winter again, and then it doesn't matter. That's our one red flag for deficit because it's snowmageddon.
But if you're going to increase the level of service, you have to have more equipment and more employees.
Yeah, so that has to be, that's right, and that's what staff identified, is that we only have so many people equipped.
If you want to change, you've got two things that it affects.
Yeah.
So sooner as opposed to later, we'll have a discussion about, yeah. Deputy Mayor?
On a related note, the dog bins along the Centennial Trail are overflowing. I don't know how often they get looked at, but. Service levels?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, we, we probably, people would use it, so if they're full, then they can't use it.
Correct.
On a related note, I have had suggestions about having sort of garbage bins just for, for dogs, for dog, picking up after your dogs in residential areas that may help ease some of the issues you've noted about people not picking up after the dogs. I don't know, that's something council's ever considered if we.
So just on the sidewalk type thing? Normally ours are associated with parks and trails, right?
Yeah, that's why I ask.
Yeah, yeah, as opposed to randomly placed.
But you have a bunch of those green receptacles sort of around town that can be used as well. One for the elementary schools, one High Street, and a rolster to town.
I wonder if any communities do their garbage receptacles based on distance, right? Like, instead of just saying they're only at parks, you could say, the parks are the anchor points, but we'll put a bin, whatever, you can, every four blocks, there's a bin so that, that you know that, okay, I only have to walk four blocks. I don't know, I just.
I like that idea. I don't, I don't know what cost would be involved.
Apparently they're three thousand dollars, well, they, I would think it would be cheaper if they're just dogs.
It's maybe the labor, like to help to them, yeah. So you'd have to determine how many and where, and that would impact your cost.
Yeah, so we can definitely have these discussions. Now, it may be something that we have a discussion this fiscal and we prep for it for next fiscal, or someone steps forward and says, my business would do two of these, or someone gives us a green. Any other questions, comments, Counsel Conklin?
When does our lease agreement expire on the visitor information center? Is it next year?
Is it twenty twenty-four?
I thought it was twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, but I'll confirm that.
It's, it's soon.
Yeah.
It's not soon enough for me.
I think it, I think it is twenty twenty-three, I think it was a ten-year lease, but I'll confirm.
We'll get that information to be answered.
I can send that to you.
Other questions?
Just one, when's our special purpose tax end?
I told Kim to be ready for that one, sorry.
I don't know where these waivers are. It's like Donald's friend, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Still got a few years to go on that, we dropped it by two cents.
Yeah.
So currently, it's projected to, for the last year to be 2930, the last year for the special purpose tax, but that's without projecting, you know, significant revenue growth. So I know what the assessment is for this year and then we just assume the same for the following year. So if that goes up, that can take some time off of that, or it might even be like a reduction to the rate in the last year or the last two. Once we get close, we might be able to say, here's what we want to do. But 2930 fiscal year.
Other questions?
Yeah, actually, Kim, while you're still there, okay, so we're looking at increasing our wastewater rate by 15%. And that's for about $465. What would we be looking at for a return if we increased it, say, to 20%? Not that much incremental, yeah.
It's based on the number, so that's like a per-unit residential and so on, so I'd have to go throw that in the spreadsheet, but, you know, it is pretty significant overall. So for example, just the 15% increase allowed us to put an extra couple hundred thousand dollars in reserve over what was, well, because we've overspent in some areas because of maintenance, we had to reduce this year, but if you look at what we're projecting, we're able to put in the reserve this year, next year's almost $300,000 more than what we were able to put away, than what we'll save in 2021. So, you know, so it's, it's pretty significant. The point is to get the rate up so that when we start having the debt repayment for sewer projects, that we're going to be able to pay those. So yes, we could put away a little bit more funds for that, and then, and we can give you that information. But there's also a commercial rate, too. So if we're going to start increasing commercial and residential differently, we'd need to look at that, too, because we've applied the same percentage to those.
Other questions? Go on once, go on twice. So just a reminder, if you have, have any, please email CIO and CC Council, and we'll return here next Tuesday and do it all again. All right, motion to adjourn. Counsel Thorburn, seconded by Counsel Caldwell, we adjourn.